Hey everyone, welcome back to our Voices United broadcast from United Way of Citrus County, right here in Meadow Crest. Thank you for joining us, whether that be on Facebook or the podcast platforms. We appreciate you listening. We also really appreciate our sponsors that helped make this happen. Last week I just weaved our sponsors into a really good sort of narrative this week. I'm just giving them a shout out. So the aesthetic house, we appreciate you all helping us make this happen. Aesthetic House is right here in Meadow Crest and they do custom curated aesthetic treatments. They'll have you looking great. Also in Home Sasa Changes Hair Design Studio, thank you for your sponsorship. Cat and Dog Coffee Roasters, Blue Water Drafting, Powers Protection that keeps our office safe. Don't come around here at night thinking you're going to get away with something. And Publix, the greatest sponsor of United Way, Citrus County, United Way Florida and United Way Worldwide. You all are amazing. It's hard to imagine United Way without our partnership with Publix. So thank you very much. All right. So you know, we are doing a series with our county commissioners. And I'm so grateful that our county commissioners would even give us the time of day. So far we've spoken to Holly Davis and Jeff Kennard. So if you haven't seen those yet or haven't heard them, then go back on our podcast. If you haven't downloaded that, subscribed to it, then please do. It's Voices United. You'll find it really easy on Apple and Spotify, probably other platforms as well. Those just come to mind right now. So go check that out and listen to it. Or you can just, if you're watching this on Facebook, go click on videos and go back and watch those videos of those interviews. And also the Chronicle, the Chronicle now has a TV app. It's really cool. I have it on my TV at the house. Numerous TVs at the house and there's digital content on there and they're actually putting our videos on there as well. So check them out. But today we have Commissioner Diana Finnegan. So Commissioner Finnegan, thank you for joining us today. I greatly, greatly appreciate it.
Hey George, how are you?
Great. And you are, you're the one commissioner that I, I know best out of everybody. We go back a long ways. And, and before I get this started, by the way, I should mention that United Way is, is not partisan. United Way is not bipartisan. United Way is nonpartisan. Okay? So if you look at these videos and you're like, ah, George needs to do a gotcha on Commissioner Kennard. Why didn't he say this? Sort of Holly Davis, sort of Diana Finnegan, that's not what this is about. This is a great opportunity for us to get our, get to know our commissioners better and to hear about issues too. It's important, but Commissioner Finnegan, I've known you longer than I've known anyone on that board because we probably met in like Shared Services Alliance meetings. That's called the Community Alliance. I'm imagining like literally, literally like years ago, I would imagine probably.
George, I'm not that old.
Yeah, well, I have a birthday tomorrow, so I'm getting older and older. That's for sure. But yeah, and it was fun. Like we, like we decided then and there in those meetings that we were, we had a lot in common. Like we, every once in a while, I feel like one of us would go on a rant or something, you know, like.
That was you. That was definitely.
I'll take.
Yes.
I will take ownership for that. It still happens every now and then, I think. But I, you get this, like when you really want to do well for your community and sometimes you feel like, gosh, enough talking, let's just get busy. Let's get busy.
Yes.
I think everybody kind of gets there, right? And I get there quickly sometimes. And then I lose my filter sometimes and whatnot, but it does come from a good place. So that's probably, that's probably where we, where we met, wouldn't you think?
We met at Mad Dads. You were at Mad Dads. I was at Casa and there was a group of kids and I was going to be the guest speaker. It was the first time I met you.
Yeah. Yeah. We were at Heron Woods and we ran an after school program.
That's right.
I had worked in a residential facility for quite a while, juvenile justice facilities. Probably about five or six years into my career and I ended up doing this mentoring program with an agency out of Ocala called Mad Dads. It's like, is there ever a worse market? Like what was the marketing meeting like on that one? Mad dads?
Not really nice happy dads.
Yeah. And it's like, okay, you've got a pre-delinquent, potentially pre-delinquent teen. And who are we going to go send them to, to every day after school? Mad dads, right?
I came in the kinder, gentler. Yeah. That's the happy mom, not the mad dad.
That's it. And that was, that was at the time where I first started going to some of those community alliance meetings and whatnot. And I remember I met Linda Powers at the time, who ended up going on to be a school board member. And she was like, George, I didn't know she had political aspirations at the time. She was a counselor at Inverness Middle School and just, I just took her like she was great. And I, I'm telling you, like every two or ever two or four years from that point on, when I met her, she's like, when you go and run for office? When are you going to run for office? I still get a little bit of that here and there. What are you going to run for office? And here we are all these years later. I'm like literally twice as old now as what I was at that, that point in time. Half of my life's gone by and haven't ran for office, but you have.
I have. And you know what? I was at a meeting, I'll just say even this week and asked me, when's George Schmosek running for office?
Are you serious?
Yes. I guess ask that all the time too. I'm your conduit. People just know like.
No kidding. That's just, all right. Well, we'll have to have a, we'll have to have a offline conversation about that. Well, now I'm interested. I'm interested. I did, I did, I was talking to a county commissioner in my office one day. And, and I said, well, who's, who's running against you? And, and this county commissioner said, well, I heard you were. And I'm like, no, 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 no. I'm just that person, like, and you know, like I'm that person, like if I were running against you, I'd give you a call.
Yeah.
Be one of the first people to know. And, and also like, I just don't play politics all that well. And, and I'll tell you what I'm thinking as I, as I say that, if, if there's two people running and I know both of those people and I like both of those people, I don't have an axe to grind with both of those people. It's like, don't expect me to like dislike somebody, you know, because I know this person that's running and that person. Like I just don't, I, it gets gross, so gross. I remember someone said one time, I wish I remember who it was. I'm sure many people have said it, by the way, but I heard someone say, run for the seat, not against the other person. And I really do kind of believe that that's the way it should be. Like in high school, we would give the opposing teams hell. Like we were a basketball school. We'd be just rowdy and giving the opposing team grief. And I remember our high school principal getting this all together in a pep rally and saying, root for your team, not against the other, right? And I do kind of, it's, there's a parallel for me there. Run for the seat, not, not just running against the other person and slinging mud. Our politics seem like, this is always the, this is always what happens here, Diana. We're already eight minutes into this and I am the one talking way too much.
That's all right.
Yeah. But I do, I feel like as our politic, I want you to weigh in on this, but I feel like as our politics nationally get more corrosive and more just gross, I feel like that that is, it's working its way down to local. And, and maybe I'm just now paying attention to it. I don't know. Maybe it's been going on for a long time, but I just feel like it's just getting more and more gross. And the, the thing that I'm afraid of is that really good people end up saying, no, I don't want nothing to do with it.
Yeah. I think that's happening. I think that you're right. I noticed that because again, I always a public servant, just like you. That's how we met, a public servant. And when I decided to run for office, I expected to just continue the work, right? Be a public servant. And then politics came along and I saw that's what it was about. People choosing sides and maybe couldn't even say hello to someone else. And I just never understood that. And I think people try to paint you into a corner, right? People want to say what they think you should be. And I think I kind of, well, I hope I broke the mold for that, right? Because ran as a conservative Republican, yet I did social work my entire life and I care about people. And I want to help them still, you know, the people that you help, the Alice people, the asset limited income restrained. Is that how you say?
Constrained, yep.
Yeah, constrained. So, um, and you know, I care about the environment and it didn't matter what party and what party still that I'm at. I feel like I'm elected to serve everyone. And I truly go into this liking everyone. And there's some points that I have moved forward or I've rendered opinion and maybe somebody doesn't agree with that. That's okay. That's, that's what we do. That's what we do in this country. There's different parties and there's different opinions. And in your, in your same party, you disagree. And leaving partisan politics out of it in county business, you don't always agree on the same things. So as a board of county commissioners, and I think we're, we're really doing that well this year. We have different ideas and sometimes we really disagree about that. But at the end of the day, we understand that we're all trying to do what's best for this county. We just may have a different idea of how to get there. And that's really what politics should look like. We're here to help everyone. And you know, George, you and I, we've known each other for a long time. And people would say and have said, we are a lot alike, right? A version of one another. But you and I have disagreed about things in the past and we're okay with that. I have so much respect for you. I'd like to think that it's reciprocal.
Of course.
And we can say our piece and out of that respect, maybe I go, oh, okay, George, I see, I see that point a little more your way. And you do the same and we just carry on. We're, we're a little wiser because of it. We understand the other point of view because of it just makes us better people. I think it'll make us a stronger county. It'll make us a stronger country if we get back to that.
Yeah. I don't think we should have the expectation among people that they're just going to agree with us all the time, right? Like what, I find that kind of ridiculous where I've spent 20 years training corrections professionals in cognitive behavioral interventions. I know a little bit of something about cognitive structure and what contributes to the way we think and act and behave and what shapes our cognitive iceberg, really? If you, if you're kind of following me, like what's below the surface, what comes out above the surface? And we all come from different backgrounds, you know, you make no bones about it, that, that you grew up in a, in a trailer in, in Floral City. And you know, what comes out of that, right? I grew up in the middle of a cornfield in Ohio and a blue collar neighborhood where everyone was, everyone's father was either a farmer or a factory worker, right? And we just, it, we, we just think differently, right? And I even try to promote that on our board here at United Way is let's have some spirited discussion every now and then, right? I don't mind if I'm on the board of other agencies or whatever. Let's have some spirited discussion about stuff we should, because my viewpoint is if you get really smart people in the room together, they're not always going to agree with one another.
Right.
And, and it is interesting, the partisan part of it is that, yeah, we might see the five of you all disagree up there here and there, but all five of you are registered Republicans. You've all ran as Republicans. It really does show that it's not like everyone's just in lockstep on the Republican platform here, the Republican train, right? You all have different viewpoints and, and, and what's always so interesting to me, and I've made this point with Commissioner Davis and Commissioner Kennard, is that when you're all up there and the cameras are rolling and you're live on YouTube, that's your only time to really discuss issues.
That's right.
Let's, let's keep that in mind as well. It's not like you having the meeting before the meeting and the meeting after the meeting means you going to jail.
That's right. Let's avoid that.
Right, right.
Let's start there.
You and I, we really didn't, we really didn't do any prep for this right here, but we could have, like we could, you could have came in the office like two hours ago. We could scripted this whole thing out. No one's going to jail for that one, but.
You know, sometimes people catch your quotes and it's like, did I say it like that? I could have, I could have put that way more eloquently, right? But you're on the fly and you're, you're not thinking, at least I'm not thinking about what I'm going to say. I really am engaged with the other commissioner is trying to tell me and listening to everything. So when it comes back, you know, I don't have everything scripted. You're just kind of on the fly and trying to get your thoughts out. Sometimes it comes out great. Sometimes it doesn't, but I think it happens to all of us.
Well, it does. And that, that reminds me kind of what you said before about you and I just kind of being straight up with one another. It was after one of the campaign events that you were like, George, how'd I do? And I was like, no, that's not the Diana I know.
Best advice.
I don't know who that was up there, but that was not, I don't know what's going on here, girl, but you got, well, no, no.
And I took that because yeah, you get into the politics of it, right? And you get like uptight and you start feeling defensive. Well, that's no place to start from. A defensive place is nowhere to start listening to people, right? Engaging in their ideas. And I said, well, what do you mean? What's, what's the Diana? And you're like, uh, you know, you'd be up there. You just have fun with it. You know, you don't think too much about it. You're, you're doing a good thing. You're just, you know, you're kind of laughing. You're having a good time. You're having fun. And I'm like, George, I'm not having fun.
Yeah.
But the very next time I went out, I took your advice and I was like, wow, I didn't cover all the topics that I would have scripted in my head. And I thought I probably bombed that. I had so many people come up to me after that and say, you must've always done this for a living. That was fantastic. You know, because it's just from my heart. And I didn't get the words out all perfectly and poised as if I would read it. And I didn't tell them every little thing I've ever accomplished. It was me. It was like me and you being real. I took that. I took that, I took that on with me. And I try to remember that when I'm sitting on, on the, on the dais, you know, just, just listen to people. Don't worry about it. If what, if it's my turn, if it doesn't come out right or if I'm saying it right, just speak from the heart.
Yeah. Well, I'll tell you what, I don't know when I've ever listened my way into trouble. I sure enough can give you a lot of examples of where I talked to myself into trouble. That, that is, that's something I always just try to remind myself all the time. So, well, it's, it's been a couple of years now. Right now you're, you're the vice chair, right? Of the commission. It's like first vice chair, right? And then there's a second, who's, who's second vice chair right now?
Commissioner Barrick.
Commissioner Barrick. All right. I think Commissioner Barrick is our next interview. So I'm, I'm looking forward to that. Seeing that she's a new commissioner. So that puts, that puts you in line to be chair during your next campaign season. So you'll be, you know, I'm not trying to make any news here. I mean, I don't know if you've announced already or if you're going to run again, but.
Yeah.
Breaking news here on Voices United.
Votes, it's not, it's not for granted. It's not like you just move up in a stack and it's your turn. I mean, it's thought to be that way. And if votes would come in and you know, how it all shakes out. Yeah.
Yeah. So it's been a couple of years now. What, what are, I'd kind of like, what are the rest of our time here? And I told you, I like to keep this around 20 minutes and now we're already at 18 minutes. Let's, let's take a little bit of time here. I guess I kind of like to know, I just think back on the last couple of years you've been on the commission, maybe something you're, you're really proud about that you've, you've, you've taken on, that you did accomplish. It doesn't have to be within commission chambers, by the way, because it, you know, we do get to see the five of you all. Like I said, on Tuesdays, beginning at one o'clock on YouTube and hopefully not lasting until 10:00 PM. And then, but outside of commission chambers as well, I know all of y'all get the opportunity to be very helpful to folks. Commissioner Kennard is my dad's commissioner. I just texted him today and said, hey, can you call my dad? He's, he's got something he's dealing with in his neighborhood. Will you, would you get ahold of him? And, and he's like, absolutely. And I know that that's got to be like more, that's some real gratifying stuff. So, so something kind of happy about as you look back on the last couple of years. And then, and then I want to hear from you, some of the things that's really kind of on the front burner for you, kind of moving forward into the next couple of years.
Yeah. Probably my favorite thing about being a county commissioner is helping people. And just like you gave that example with Commissioner Kennard, that is daily. I think people don't realize that, like people need help every single day. And every single day that I wake up, it's an opportunity to help people. And sometimes it really even takes very little on the part of a commissioner and it can make a whole world of difference to someone else. So that's, that's my, that's my favorite part. When I ran for office, there were some things that, that I wanted to do and some promises that I made, and I feel like I'm accomplishing those, right? I wanted to watchdog our tax dollars. I wanted to try to protect our environment. And totally, totally mind blanked on the last one, but you know, part of the environment is our, our water, right? Our water resources and protect those resources. So the budget was a big thing. And if you've ever not looked at our budget, I welcome anybody to do that. It's like in a book like this, maybe this big. It's, you know, over a thousand pages and that's the synopsis of each department. So, you know, went through all of that and you, you know, you see what you see and you know, I'm trying to, we need things in the, in the community, but we need to temper that with understanding that our taxpayers are going through a lot, you know, in this economy. So I think I've done well balancing that as a commissioner. I did do a deep dive and you know, a learning lesson for me of where to look and how to look and questions to ask. You know, I did find a good sum of money, which we probably don't need to talk about all of that right now. In ways that we could reduce the last budget. But you know, my fellow commissioners kind of all said, this needed to come out at a different meeting. Well, I didn't see it before at those meetings. It was at the last. So I know really something, I know better how to look at things, you know, to really try to look out for, for your tax dollars. So that's something that I'm, I'm proud of. The biggest thing is working on the septic to sewer. And part of that is it's multifaceted, right? Because it's good for our environment. It's good, big picture, and it's still helping taxpayers financially. And I can explain that. We have many projects going on right now. I didn't realize what an impact it was to citizens of Citrus County financially.
The sewer project.
Yes. I mean, we all know it's good, right? Because we all share the aquifer. There's these things called BMAP plans. It stands for Basin Management Action Plan. And the state says, okay, you have these plans, you have some outstanding springs and this all affects your aquifer. And we need to reduce nitrogen in, in this, in this water, if you will. So we have plans. How do we do that? Well, we have a fantastic director of water resources and he's allocated in our county, these different projects, what we can do to meet the state's requirement. Of course, we have grant funding and different things to accomplish that. It all sounds great. And then we have money that's went to the springs, right? To clean them up. Everything's going good. Well, then a gentleman, when I was fairly new commissioner, kind of laid this out for me. And to be a hundred percent honest, I didn't quite get it all at the time. And I started asking questions. And when you're talking about engineering and things are completely out of your wheelhouse, it takes an education, right? So I, I'm a fairly good self educator, but our water resource director, Ken Cheek, is a much better educator and has really helped me along. So I looked at that first project in Cambridge Greens and I realized how much it was costing each homeowner. And I, I brought this before the board a few weeks ago and said, okay, we were all told, okay, there's an assessment. Well, what's the assessment? How bad is it going to affect the homeowner? It could be up to $5,800. We try to keep that down. So people were already complaining, getting to me in Home Sasa. I hear projects are coming. The county cannot charge us $6,000. That's not right. That's not right. When I did the all in cost of the homeowner and I showed the board, it was just shy of $14,000 per lot, per lot. Now roughly $8,000 of that amount could be put on someone's taxes and then it's 6% interest until it's paid off. Now the board brought up by another commissioner, right before I brought this up, talked about the PACE program and how people were putting appliances or different things, air conditioning, maybe a roof repair on their taxes and then couldn't pay the taxes. The county never wants to force this on people, at least in my opinion. Where we'd ever put someone forcing it on them, forcing it on their taxes and then having them a problem paying property taxes. Now that still leaves another $5,000 that these people would have to come up with in like the next 365 days, once the project's complete. Now I know there's a perception out there that people think, well, maybe it's just people that live on the water, people out in Citrus Hills. So you know, it's okay. The project storage that I have coming up in our district is Old Home Sasa, people that are not on the water. There are people in mobile home parks. There are people that maybe you would help with the United Way. There's no way in good conscience, I can allow all of this to happen. So of course I shared my concerns with Steve Howard and he was like, yes, work, work with Ken Cheek, our water resource director. And we have been working feverishly together to, to get a better plan in motion. And now remember, we're trying to go backwards because a lot of these things are in motion already. So I think we have come up with a pretty good plan, moving forward and then being able to go backwards. I have found SWIFMUD and the DEP actually to, to be quite helpful. We're in the infancy stages of us working together to correct some of these problems of how money was given to us. I think we're going to do it. So the goal is to get to zero assessment, which still that might clear up $5,800. And then there has been money available, like in a reimbursable to homeowners to try to get some of those other things paid. So it's a heavy lift, but I feel like I can be a heavy lift kind of person. So I'm excited about what we're doing. I'm excited about pushing these projects forward quickly because we need them. But at the same time, letting our homeowners breathe that sigh of relief that we're not going to overburden them with this project. And of course I see big picture too. Why are these projects good? We get it affordable to the homeowner. It's good for everybody's drinking water. You can then take some of that wastewater into reclaimed water, right? And we just got $4 million last year. So reclaimed water in Home Sasa is now going to the Sugar Mill Woods or it's the, the project's in motion to get it ready to go to Sugar Mill Woods Golf Course. We've got water going to the Black Diamond Golf Course. It's not coming out of our aquifer. As the county grows to golf courses, possibly to industry, possibly to, to neighborhoods for watering. That will be very cost effective and really good for our aquifer.
Well, listen, as somebody who lives in the heart of Cambridge Greens, I'll just say, I appreciate any work that can be done on this. I have, I have told my children numerous times, Rebecca and I bought the home that we're in five, five years ago. Well, a little longer than that. November, November 2019, right before COVID, right before the housing market went insane. We bought it at the right time. But I've reminded my children many times, listen, the only reason why you are sitting on a corner lot in Cambridge Greens is because your mother and I, who've worked nonprofit forever, we bought two homes that were gross and we flipped those homes. And that's why we have the home that we do. And it stressed me out at the time to even think about a mortgage over $200,000. And we were barely over $200,000. Now, well, that's a steal, isn't it?
That's right.
Like I'd buy them all day if I could. I still don't have the money to buy them all day if I could. But if I could, I'd buy them all day at, at $212,000. There's just no doubt about it. So people don't need to think, oh, well, that's Citrus Hills. Like you, like you mentioned, Diana, like there's people in there. And I think about, there's a lady in our neighborhood who, I don't know her story fully, but what I know is that she lives by herself and she needs extra money. And so she's out walking the neighborhood every day, just looking to be able to be helpful to somebody for, for some money. Like we pay her plenty more than we should to pull weeds in our front landscaping, right? But if she comes knocking, we do our best to, to help her out. And by the way, I hate pulling weeds, but, but, but we do that. And I think it'd be a heavy enough lift for our household to just get hit with 14 grand. But how in the world is she going to deal with that? How are the other folks in our neighborhood that truly are on fixed incomes? How are they going to deal with a $14,000 hit? I don't know. That's really going to put people in a tough situation. So I appreciate it. I know. in a tough situation. So um, I appreciate it. I know other homeowners in in my neighborhood appreciate it as well. And um,
Your Cambridge Green people, and we uh, we had talked about it, that $4,000 uh, there's available reimbursables. So some of those expensive Cambridge Greens doesn't have to take that large of a hit. Although it's still a lot. Uh, Cambridge Greens is so far beyond the other ones. Um, I don't know that we're going to get that a lot more than that $4,000, but I think there's a plan in place to get a little bit more, a little bit more. I'm going to do everything that I can. Um, even to help Cambridge Greens, along with all the ones that's happening in my district in Homasasa.
Mm hmm. Well, it, we would, we would appreciate it. I know everybody there would. And uh, you know, while you were talking, I also thought about just the learning curve be becoming a commissioner. I mean, you you, you kind of alluded to that to some degree, right? And and um, I know there's a couple of bills right now floating through the legislature to limit the the terms that commissioners can can serve. And I I can see both sides of that, right? I I really truly can. But gosh, you know, um, there just has to be that period of adjustment as a commissioner where you're just really sort of figuring things out and and really hitting your stride. Right? I mean, it it has to take a little bit of time.
I I would agree with that. I think what's on the uh, the agenda now, um, or up at the legislature, I think they're talking 12 years.
Oh, are they? Okay. Cause I was thinking it was eight at one point anyway.
It was. I think the past session or maybe one before that was brought up for eight years. Now it's 12 and that seems fair. I think term limits are, term limits are good for politicians. Um, the state has term limits, the government, our state is well, president does, but Congress does not.
Senate, right? Yeah, no.
Yeah. And I think the people want that, you know, I think people want term limits, um, reasonable though, you know, reasonable term limits.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, it's got to be reasonable. I, yeah, I didn't know, moved to 12. So that that's much more palatable, I think, when you, when you think about. Uh, you don't want to have someone hitting their stride and then they're, they're out of there. And by the way, I mean, listen, um, you you mess around, uh, they'll vote you out anyway, right?
That's true.
Yeah.
Concerns, I think, um, you know, and I see the other side too with counties. They're worried. Every county is not the same. And then if you're broken to districts, you know, what if your term limit's up and then people don't necessarily want to run in that district, you know? I could see there being problems, especially in smaller counties. So we'll see, we'll see how that uh, how that works out. I can see both sides of the argument.
Yeah. Well, tell me uh, before I let you go, uh, tell me how has growing up in Floral City in that trailer, um, how has that served you well um, in um, in in government and even business? You and your husband own Air FX and electrics and you you all are uh, busy business people as well. And also, um, you know, people recognize me all the time from the newspaper, the 365 pitchers and you're, you're, you all, your businesses are are a part of our small business 365 program. You're a a member of our Women United group here. I basically hit you up so many different ways that you all just made a great contribution to us and said, all right, George, leave me alone for a while and we
I think you're going to create more things for us to belong to, so I'll just keep calling it out. Okay. Remember that too. All right. United Way, here's my party needs to join. You guys are doing phenomenal work for the people out here. So
We're definitely trying. That's for sure. But 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 y'all been successful in in business and and then and and now politics is as well. So so what what are some of those lessons from a Floral City uh, childhood uh, that you think has served you really well?
You know, um, you grow up without a lot and you learn to appreciate everything you have. Uh, you learn to appreciate people, you know, how to be a good neighbor. I think what's important for me is that um, I have a long memory with that. You know, I remember how things feel. I remember uh, when money was out and there wasn't money for milk or or whatever was needed till the next paycheck of my parents. Um, I remember being very little. And if you got a dollar or something from grandma or a little couple of dollars for Christmas, like I'd squirrel that away. And in my thought, I remember in case my family needed it. Um, in saying that, uh, thanks to the good Lord, Steve and I have been successful. Um, but I I remember how to live like that. And I remember what other people go through. And I remember what in my lifestyle now may not seem like a lot of money or, you know, a fee or something to be paid. Um, I know what that feels like for somebody else, that what may be, oh, it's only $20 or something. I know what that means to someone else. Um, I remember starting out and starting over as a single mom with my son and trying to give him the best life that I could as I was trying to make my own way in business. Um, I I think remembering the struggles of other people. And of course, in Floral City, I have to give a shout out to Floral City Elementary School. What a group of phenomenal teachers out there when I was growing up. They were amazing. Um, I was always inquisitive and inventive and they just fostered that. When the best principal in the entire world, Jimmy Hughes, was moving up. Um, and we were crying. I mean, we loved the man, like he was a father figure. Um, he, oh gosh, was I fourth, fourth grade, I think? And I said, we need to have something for him and we need a program. So at that tender age of maybe I was 10, uh, they had me MC the entire thing. And we all put something together. Um, when the song We Are The World came out, remember that? I think I was maybe sixth grade. They used to have sixth grade out there. I wanted to do a benefit. We had a whole uh, sale at the school. And I remember having our little tape recorder and playing the song over and over. And we were there on a Saturday and selling things and saving the money. And then we had a teacher that was getting it all together to send it to the mission. That caring spirit, they just helped me with that, to be a good neighbor and want to help people. Um, bring people up, right? And you know, the work that you do, you know, it's not always about that handout. We don't want people to be dependent, but really speak to their lives and give them that handout and something life changing. Um, those days in Floral City, I can say were life changing for me. You don't realize it at the time, right? You're a kid. And I always joke, you know, I grew up like that. I I got a little bit of fight in me. I'm a fighter. Um, and you know, I've, I've learned to, don't laugh when I say tamper that down a bit, but I do know, like you, George, we get passionate about things, especially when it comes to people and helping people and the right and wrong of something, we get passionate. So um, I've really learned that no matter how passionate I am, I need to just stop and take a breath and really listen to people. And I think that just makes us all better people. Um, I I I hope that even on an individual basis, I'm doing a lot of good for the county. I think that this board is working well together. I think we're going to do a lot of good things uh, in the future for Citrus County. Um, it's exciting times for us.
Awesome. Well, I I normally end the broadcast by asking what you're excited about in the future, but I think you just told us and and um, and I'm glad to hear you say that about your viewpoint on this board. Uh, Commissioner Kennard spoke about that with this board in particular. Um, not throwing any other boards in the past uh, under the, under the bus or anything, but this seems like a a a a board where in particular you all will work together and solve some problems. And and um, you know, in my viewpoint, I say it all the time and I I don't owe it to anybody to say it, by the way. It's just an honest assessment. The the county staff that I deal with anyway, have just been absolutely fantastic. So I think that we're certainly at a pivotal point in our community. Everyone knows that with all the growth. And it seems to me like um, there's plenty of people that are encouraged about the board that we have right now and the county staff. And so we're, we're probably right where we need to be in terms of leadership. So um, even if we have a disagreement here or there, right?
Even if
You know, and and the uh, the great thing uh, that I appreciate about you and our friendship over uh, 20 years amongst many things. Um, whether it's just uh, we share the same outlook on some stuff and passion and and the way that um, you and Steve are so generous um, as well as that, that we can um, talk freely and disagree here or there, hash things out and um, and I appreciate that. Like I, there's been plenty of times where I'm like, I've expressed a viewpoint and you're like, yeah, I don't know about it. Like I'm not, you know? So I I appreciate that about people. I appreciate that about you. And thank you for serving, right? Because I tend to think that oftentimes it does seem like a thankless job to some degree. Um, my job kind of feels that way sometimes too. And it probably does come back to a lot of the stuff that you do after hours that no one sees when the camera is on and you're, y'all are on YouTube, right? You you all do a lot to help the community. So thank you for serving. Thank you for being there. And uh, look forward to seeing you and I'm sure other commissioners as well in um, Tallahassee next week as we go up for Chamber Day. So um, let's try to finagle our way into uh, sitting at the same uh, table next week at Governor's Club and have dinner.
That sounds wonderful. That's a deal.
All right. Sounds good. All right. Diana Finnegan, everyone. Uh, thank you again for joining us and thank you for for watching the broadcast. Thank you for listening on our podcast uh, platform. Uh, I love it if you would share this video uh, on Facebook, share it with others so they can see it. It's always cool if you click like, but shares better. And subscribe to our podcast, uh, go to Apple, Spotify, wherever you get your podcasts, look for Voices United and subscribe and listen to our weekly broadcast. So thank you for listening. We'll be back here. Uh, I believe next week, I think I'm on pre-record. Uh, Commissioner Barrick, because we will be in Tallahassee next week, but I don't know. If it's not next week, it'd be the week after. Uh, we got other things to do around here than just uh, go live on camera. So let me get off of here right now and go help some folk. So we'll see you next week.
Bye, Citrus County. Love you.